Yeah, we do need a motion, a second, a vote to come out of executive session. I move that we come out of executive session.
Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Here's the second.
Hi, it was me.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, to do it that way and not. So we're out of closed executive session.
Yes, and I'll state for the record that uh this session was held for the purposes stated on the record directions of the staff.
Okay, this report was recorded. Okay. Now, what I'm told is, is uh has this next section is not being transmitted?
We do need, uh, we do need to adjourn the meeting, the first meeting, because this is a separate agenda is as a separate.
If that, take, accept the motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
For a second.
Second. Think you can just say that for adjourned, but yeah. I'm in favor.
Any, any opposition to adjourn? Okay, and uh, we are adjourned. At twelve twenty seven. And now, agenda, so now we will go into meeting, start that officially with a board member roll call. We should do.
You're calling, you're calling that to order?
Yes, yes. So, so I will call that the next meeting, this one is officially. The uh, Budget Work Session. We have all. Here.
Yeah.
For Mr. Ross, he is here, Dr. Boo. President. Commissioner Guynor.
Here.
Where you saw.
Here.
Dr. Chan. Mayor Dixon. Commissioner Nelson.
Yeah.
We're all here. And with that, uh, we have our motion to uh, be adjourned.
So move.
We're all seconded by Commissioner Nelson. So then we have our agenda approved. Anyone like to make any Board of Health comment? Okay, so we're done that one today. And we'll now move to item number four, which is public comment for things not on the agenda. And I don't see any on the House here, so.
There are none, thank you.
They are not online. All right, and with that, we'll get to uh, real business here. Twenty twenty six, twenty twenty six, the work session. And again, they're gonna have a couple of things up front which you would like if you feel for uh or uh support on. Uh, that's the most important part, meaning I have to deal with that until, and then we'll move into kind of one of if we have time for that. If not, that I'll do this and then we'll figure it out, but with that, I'm going to hand it off.
Thank you. Um, so there are two items that we wanted to bring forward to the board's consideration as we look at sustainable uh, public health budget moving into twenty twenty six. Uh, the first item that we wanted to discuss with you is to evaluate the future of public health staff. Um, I know many new board members may not be familiar, uh. So I wanted to provide a little background regarding what is public health staff. Um, Public Health South and um, Michelle, could you advance the slides? Um, Public Health South is a facility that we own in Fountain, Colorado. That building is owned by the Board of Health and uh, was purchased by the Board of Health. Uh, that purchase occurred in, um, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just want to clarify, Public Health does not own the building. The building has been condominiumized, and so we own a condo unit within the building. I just want to make that explanation.
Um, so, uh, background on this, um, building was purchased in twenty twenty for a purchase price of two point four million dollars. Um, that purchase was made during the height of the pandemic and um when the building was purchased, the building had previously been um, a retail site, then it transitioned to a uh event venue, and there were substantial upgrades and renovations to the building to make that usable for public health. Um, we are reviewing the expenditures that were made um, to improve the building. Uh, there were also expenditures as the building was impacted by um flooding and some leaks as well that required remediation in that building. So we are reviewing uh, all of those expenses that were related to improvement of that building. That is probably um, slightly over an additional two million over the years that has been spent spent to make um, security enhancements, safety enhancements, um, make the work placed enhanced. Internet was considered, there is a generator that was um, placed in that building. Um, so decisions including the purchase and sale of this building um, fall to the purview of the Board of Health, which is why we are having this conversation today. Um, during the response period, the building was mobilized as a response hub in the southern part of the county um, and was quickly utilized for that um, purpose. We have also, over the years, had different partner entities that have been with us in that building, including portions of the building being leased to the city of Fountain. For a period, we also had a partnership with um, Mount Carmel in the building as well. And um, however, we have not realized the full potential of that building. The building is um, thirty thousand square feet and has um areas of the building that are unutilized at this time. One of the largest footprints within that building is a very large conference room that has approximately twelve thousand square feet for that conference room, and that is not in routine use. Uh, although that was where we filled our public health distribution during the pandemic response. Currently, programming that we have occupying that building is the Women, Infants, and Children um program that you've heard about earlier today, as well as the Communities That Care program that is the Youth Substance Use Prevention Program that um is focused on the Fountain Valley area, so works out of that. Um, as we have seen, WIC funding is continuing to reduce and with locations we have here, um, southeast Colorado Springs as well as Fountain. This is the location with the least utilization for the Women, Infants, and Children Supplemental Nutrition Program. In addition to unutilized space, we do have a cost in maintaining the building, and that is roughly two hundred and thirty K per year. That supports security at the building, um, our HOA fees, utilities, um, facility work and internet. So the ongoing costs are approximately two hundred and thirty thousand per year. We have um, looked at different options for the building, including um opportunities to expand partnerships in the building, but as our, our core programs in that area only occupy a small portion, and it is our least utilized WIC location. Um, staff are bringing forward a recommendation today that the board consider selling the building um due to the concerns for current utilization, um, considerations with our budget restrictions, and um the ability to maintain that building in long term and concerns for sustainability, um, as well as um, you know, there's a cost for maintenance to prepare to keep the building operational. Um, I know this is uh, probably uh, a lot of questions for new board members who may not have even seen the space and wonder what we're talking about specifically. So I did want to offer that any board members who would like to tour the building, we would be happy to set up tours of the facility with board members so that you can um better understand the facility that we're discussing and what is available there. Um, if the board is amenable to considering what this would look like, um, we do have a on-call with the state contract through our facilities team with the county. Um, so we do have a real estate group that would work with us in exploring what that would look like and um, what we, what that process would be. Uh, so we could invite them to present to the board so you can have more information about what that would be. Um, however, in the context of our funding, this is a ongoing cost that we have concerns with sustaining and maintaining. So would like to welcome board questions of, about this facility.
Four point four million dollars in the building now, right? So do you have any kind of market analysis on?
That is something that we would um, pursue with the real estate group, so they would bring that forward as part of the conversation. Or what market value of the building would be. I have not pursued that at this point, uh, because I would like to have direction from the board to explore that.
So if, well, I guess I'm getting ahead of myself, but if you were to sell the building, uh, would you continue to use it for its, you know, with its current occupants' uh, programs until it actually sells?
Yes. Um, if we were to sell the building, would we be looking to relocate and have those services still located in Fountain in a smaller facility? Are you looking to move them to other existing locations? Uh, to absorb into our, our other locations, primarily this location.
Okay.
We would be bringing staff to this. And we have space and. Yes, we can make that work. We have some flexible workstations, we have um, some space available.
And do you know the uh, the raw numbers down there?
Uh, Deisha, do you happen to have that for? You have looked at that, I don't have it up here. See if I can find it.
But I thought I had heard once and it was very low.
It is our least utilized location.
Fifty thousand is the building or the condo community?
The condo, the condo space that we have.
Do we have a tenant's deck still?
Uh, we do have a lease agreement with the city of Fountain for one of the uh, locations or one of the units within that condo, and um, so we do have that lease that, we do not have other partnerships. We have looked at that, I think uh, part of our concern in bringing forward this recommendation is that many of our partners um, are also in a period of assessing their ability to expand services, so um traditional public health partners who might be interested in expanding their services, like us, have some limitations in their ability to do that.
I believe twenty thousand dollars.
And after two hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Thirty-three?
Okay, and the rest, you see, like, hundred thousand dollars are something we can.
Well, the biggest expenditure item in that two hundred and thirty K is just over one hundred for security presence at the building.
So, yeah. We can move out of that building, so if this is here, a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we would still have the HOA fees, we would still have um, some expenses related to that.
Insurance.
Yeah.
Would we still need security down there though?
If we weren't occupying, I, I don't think we would have.
It's in the building.
Besides. So outside of the condo?
Yes.
Um, it, it is a um, strip mall of uh, so there have been restaurants, there is a chiropractic office going into building some retail spaces within.
Have been any interest from private sector or whenever you put up a word lease sign?
We have not put up a word lease sign, uh. So we have uh, communicated with partners to explore options, um, others that have expressed interest, but that has not led to fruition. If we were to explore leasing this space, I think um, you know, there's some concerns about maintaining your property. We would still have to have property management and um staff infrastructure to support doing that appropriately, and um, that would be a, an ongoing burden for public health um, to retain the building if it's not being utilized for services. Really falls outside of the services, do we really want to be a, a property?
Well, last year, we were turning a profit. But I'm great, I, I'm gonna have to give you one. So uh, thanks to everybody for a good meeting today. Okay, solve all these problems.
It'd be really helpful if we had some more information in terms of the market value, I think.
That's um, I will just say that is part of why I'm bringing this forward, because if we are going to ask for the commercial real estate group to come and have that conversation with you, I want to first have us have the conversation about the necessity for that and align with the board to move forward in seeking that consultation. Um, so that's why I'm, I'm asking this question today.
I think, just if I were to put it really succinctly, it sounds as though the needs of the community do not match the costs. So even if um, and she's looking for exact numbers, but like, in terms of that area, that unit not utilizing this space to outweigh the costs of this need in this location up there.
As we have a substantial amount of square footage there that is not utilized, and we don't see within public health, uh, a future near.
So I think, yeah, we want to put it in context of like the building to sell it, but also recognizing that like us here, that public services are just not utilized in this area and to, or if those continue to cost. And to the comment about, I mean, I feel very strongly that, you know, we're not in the business. So we just need to our mission is.
Comments? Tell this.
This is not an action item, it's just a, or, it's just a discussion. So just some nods or give a direction.
Are you good?
I, yes, I would, uh, I'm, I'm in support of proceeding to consider selling the bill, the condo. In addition, I would also encourage considering just moving out of that.
Then, um, the other item that we wanted to discuss with you are some considerations around the use of fund reserve requests. Um, as we discussed previously at other board meetings, we do have a healthy fund reserve, and uh, one of the items that we would like to bring forward considerations are uh, this is our OWTS team, our onsite wastewater team with uh, county vehicles to do their work, and I'll have a cats to speak to this.
Good, thank you. So, for those who maybe don't have context or haven't ever um, lived on a septic system, they tend to be in the rural areas, right? Um, we have pockets with, throughout the county, such as Green Mountain Falls, Cascade Peter Park, um, areas behind the Broadmoor that are within local commuting distance paper roads. However, most of the miles that we put on our personal vehicles right now are rural. Many of the sites are upwards of an hour away from this location, uh, with the average travel time being forty-five minutes to an onsite wastewater treatment system site. Most of that is on unmaintained graded dirt roads, going into construction sites. So our staff are currently driving their personal cars, um, many of which have cars such as Honda Fits or Civics Impalas that we are taking out into these areas. This is the area that I came from, and I went through about ten cars in four years just doing this work, so um, the mileage doesn't necessarily cover the actual wear and tear that we are putting on our vehicles, but the bigger concern that I have for my staff is we are dealing with wastewater. We oftentimes on repairs are at active sites where pipes have been cut, you know, tanks are full. In order for us to actively check these systems and thoroughly inspect them, we are oftentimes having to access the tank, which has had components in the water. Um, now, we do equip our, equip our staff with gloves and sanitizer, but the equipment, our shoes, you know, the stuff that we're utilizing, our levels that we're putting on these pieces of um or components of the system are then being put back into our vehicles, which is also where our groceries go, our kids go, our pets go, so there's unintentional routes of exposure to various things from that. And we also can't equip them with the appropriate tools to fully do their job, so, you know, they're pulling out those things that have been in wastewater for, you know, how long, um, with their hands, whereas if we could get the right tools and have a space to keep them in a truck, that would then equip them to not, to have less direct exposure to wastewater. So, really what we're looking for is uh trucks for the staff that would be assigned to them, that they could take with them, which to the point of, you know, OWTS, I know has been one of that, one of those areas where we can't necessarily turn things around very quickly. We do access the county vehicles that we do have here. It takes an average of three hours of the staff members day to come to the office, pick up a vehicle, drive out forty-five minutes to an hour, and then come back. That's less time we have to get the work done and connect with community members. Whereas if we can model this after other county agencies such as code enforcement, um, different regional building entities as well that allow their staff to take those vehicles and keep them home, with the understanding that they cannot use them for personal use, nobody personally outside of them can use that, it would increase our efficiency as well in that.
Mileage, um, are you seeing each year for a total mileage for these um, onsite inspections?
So we budget in environmental health in total about sixty thousand dollars a year for mileage. The OWTS team is anywhere from thirty-five to forty percent of that.
So sixty thousand dollars a year, is that based on like sixty-two cents a mile?
On the federal rate, yes.
Um, and what are you projecting for maintenance costs on five vehicles per year? Maintenance, you know, insurance?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to tap Lauren for that one.
We're, we're working on uh, that information, we don't anticipate additional insurance costs for that because the county's self-insured and it's pretty covered. Uh, but there would be additional maintenance, um, I think. Um, for, how many vehicles do we have? Maybe we could just circle back. Um, and, and it's not significant, um.
I do, I think, in summary, I think the cost of providing mileage to the staff and the exposure and all the pieces that go into that is, and the difference to the county maintaining costs, I think we would see a cost savings there, um, to some extent, or it would be negligible.
Okay, so you're saying that you're spending sixty thousand dollars a year reimbursing it at sixty-two cents a mile, right?
For the whole division.
Okay, okay, and then, so ostensibly, you're saying that, you know, the maintenance, gas, no insurance needed, I guess, um, is going to be sixty thousand dollars or less for these five additional vehicles?
I don't think we have act, uh, numbers right now, that's part of what we're still working on with that. We can bring that back to you.
Yeah, so I would love to see the numbers, I really think that if, we would need to know like what is cost, I think that um benefits to the employees that you're mentioning, I think are huge, um, because I can totally see that point. Is that alone enough, maybe, but I would really love to be the number two, because if there were going to be some, you know, much larger costs that we weren't anticipating, and then I would also say, um, if you're going to go to this, then I don't know what your asset management kind of um, current outlook is, but obviously those would have to be not only maintained, but at some point replaced, right? So what is the life cycle? I don't know if you guys have really looked into that piece, and I'm certain that have, you know, resources to look into that, but also, obviously, the county has public works vehicles and all kinds of other stuff that I'm sure they could share what um, what their life cycle is and what they're looking at, because obviously, there's a, there's a total cost, but I do think, I mean, I you know, I wouldn't want to put my family in that car either, so, um, plus I also think there's an added benefit that you don't have up here, which is also identifying yourselves to public, which is also, I'd love to see the numbers.
Regional building, buy a certain model of caps. Yes, they're more expensive upfront, but their trade-in values also higher. So, and the life cycle cost, and for them, it makes more sense to buy these for expensive certain brand of pickups, basically. So, yeah, you probably want to say, okay, life cycle, anticipate life of how many years with uh, with a resale value and then factor all that in.
I will also add too, to help with some of that is, OWTS is one program in, within environmental health that we are allowed to fully recover costs within that program, including indirect costs as well, so that is something that we can factor into fee analysis as we're, we're evaluating those too, as far as ongoing.
Break point three, spending in my area, any kind of additional expense is painful. On Ziverda, Dada, minimum fifty thousand dollars.
But is it common for county vehicles to be kept at the employee's home?
We have not historically done that, we keep county vehicles here. I will say there are others uh, who do that, such as um, RVD and stormwater. Um, I think in this case, uh, we would be working with risk management about structuring that um, and understanding regarding those expectations and documentation for that. The reason we would have it um, kept at their home is for the hour and a half plus uh, time that would be spent coming here to pick up a vehicle, only to go back out and then to deliver the vehicle at the end of the day, because again, most of this work is happening not in the city center, but in um, the more rural areas of, of the community or up into uh, Fremont Falls area.
But isn't that assuming that the person lives an hour and a half away from here?
No, so they would have to come in to the office, pick up keys, pick up vehicle, retrace back out instead of leaving from their residence directly to where they would go. So it's the time of coming in, picking up, swapping out, getting equipment, checking out, and going back out again, and repeating that process at the end.
Our average staff. Our program, yeah.
Um, it took me an hour to get here this morning.
Yeah, it took me an hour. Like, of all your staff, more, most of them live further than forty-five minutes away. I mean, that's like, that's on them, they're choosing to leave their work, but.
Right.
But like, I mean, I was, I'm like, this seems like a no-brainer to me, um, but I appreciate that we should look at numbers, but I just, I, I, I feel like, and I get the logic, even if they were only twenty minutes away to come, wow. Like, I'm sorry.
Although it is a strong reaction. Destination, it assumes that their destination is closer to their home than, than to here, because this could also be on the way to wherever they need to go.
But if you know, like, specifically. I mean, I, I think maybe everyone doesn't know where this, like, lots of our town. They don't live in the city, I know it's true of our public, uh, as well. I am curious, though, are you guys looking at um I know a lot of our vehicles have, because they have GPS in them for obviously getting to places, it makes sense, but they also have the ability to uh, but like, literally track, track where the location, so that's um, that helps with those concerns about like, where are they parking it? Is it because all that data is there?
It's my understanding that um, I so I talked with Mindy Schultz over at County Code. All of the vehicles that they have between stormwater and code are all tracked. They all have a tracking mechanism on them. So I would anticipate that being a conversation we should have with this. We're also not asking for one for every single staff member because of trying to increase turnaround times and increase community connection. One of our staff members is not in the field every week. So this would be like rotating through them as well. So the staff member that's not in the field would not have a truck for that week. And then we can shift them through the staff members as well.
Maybe what we need to do is ask staff to go back to us with numbers and then that other answer some of the questions that you gave today.
Make it clear, I'm understanding staff group has the ability to come to work.
They do, yes, which can be inside of some of our cars. That then creates muddy messes and things for the rest of the agency to utilize those as well, but we do, and we do utilize them. So specifically when we are training staff to limit two cars collecting mileage to the same location, multiple sites throughout the day. The E H staff are required to meet here, pick up a car, take one vehicle for purposes of training. So we do utilize the vehicles that we currently have. But again, it does take us some substantial time to come collect that car.
So maybe you can let us know how many vehicles we currently have and using what their lifespan look looking like. Addition to the other.
Just to be clear, because we're saying, you know, come back with numbers, but I know what I would like to see specifically ongoing maintenance costs. Comparing that to what the current mileage is so we can project what are the additional, you know, what are the increases to cost that we are assuming that there is, it's possible that when you look at the mileage at some point. Maybe a replacement type time period or whatever, or when you, yes, I know regional building does that with the sales. Be mindful of the hail, right? Also, that's a issue that we've Mayor and I get to serve on regional building together. So we've had those same conversations. But all of all that's, those are the numbers I would personally like to see. And I don't know if anyone has anything different.
Square of us benefit analysis type of thing, including resale.
Understanding that some of those benefits are not cost related, but are still very valuable and.
I'm just interjecting because I'd like to ask a question of D N. So framing these discussions, because, you know, as we go through some of these specific items, particularly on this page. Are you looking to, when you come back and bring this information back, are you looking for individual votes on these items? Or are you looking for direction to include these items in the budget, which will then come back? Because we're starting to get to the point where we don't have time to come back with information and then ask for further direction because we're starting to budget costs. Thank you, Lori, for that clarification. So for the purposes of a work session today, these are elements that we anticipate building in to the budget. And for the purposes of the work session, trying to have a conversation about willingness to consider this and additional information needed so that when we come back to the budget conversation, we are better poised to move forward on the budget. So we're not looking for a vote today. We're not looking for specificity today beyond, yes, you're open to this being built into the budget and more information being provided. Would be often that if the information sways the other way, the board can then move to remove that from the budget as they consider the overall. Any head nods? And then also related to fund reserve requests. We have a request related that we intend to pursue related to digital ADA compliance. Michelle, would you speak to that?
If legislation that went into the regarding new requirements for digital accessibility, we are requesting just under $16,000. Into compliance and maintaining that $1,000 for third party remediation. We have a number of chipbook that are typically large in terms of over 100 pages with lots of complex graphs and tools that would require a lot of staff time to complete. They're also working to train. Having a small amount of funds. Structure and completing that mediation would just help. And then additionally, as we are bringing through this process as well with our website that our communications backend issues that require coding to fix that our team cannot maintain. Clipper. So the $9,600 that is part of this request. Work to maintain compliance with the complex.
You might have said it, but I didn't hear. Are these recurring or non-recurring?
This would be as a one-time request from our all the work to get our staff all the trained up.
And includes the backend web support. That's a kind of a one-time thing over maybe a few months.
Yes, that's correct. And one of the things that we're also looking at with our county partners. So Public Health has our own website that we maintain. Is being taken into consideration. So this is really intended to get us to work.
So super familiar with this issue and in support of this, but I'm curious because we just got a very in-depth briefing on this a few weeks ago at the county. And we are utilizing and you guys may already be, but we are utilizing a software that essentially converts everything. Are you guys using that as well?
Yes, it may not be the same one, but we do have a software we are using.
So ours eliminated staff time and reduced our costs down to, I mean, like ridiculously low compared to what we thought it was going to be. So maybe you could reach out to the and see if that might be something that we get further for this because basically what we have seen is now they can just click and it converts everything for them and there's not as much staff work.
There's also like a program that they can, I don't know. That it automatically is updating everything that you load to your website. So, yeah, talk with the county people and.
I think I'm in support of this. I'm slightly confused, however, because we are projected to be over $1,000 in the black for 2025. What is the reason to request the this fund from reserve?
I request, it's not an ongoing request. Have to be in compliance.
Would that not come from even from infrastructure? As an example, infrastructure and that we get, we're in the red, it's a project in the black. I'm going to there specifically for infrastructure like this.
So this we are putting as a fund reserve request because it's in compliance with the fund reserve policy. And if we added these into the budget, we would no longer be at a balanced budget. So there isn't space in the budget as we've discussed so far to be able to absorb these costs.
It'll roll over into the fund balance, though. Right. So it technically is coming up. Coming out that same amount of dollars. But it should roll over, right? So that is essentially where we are getting the money from, kind of. But it's just that because it's next year, it'll roll into that.
And I would just like to add that 800,000 is our variance to our proposed budget. We do anticipate we'll be going into fund reserve this year in the 106,000 amount. The reason it shows as black on that representation is because that is a positive variance to what was originally budgeted, which was 970,000 of fund reserve expenditures for this year. We are substantially less, but we still anticipate utilizing fund reserve this year.
At the end of 25, we have.
So it's always accumulating positive or negative, like you're saving.
If it rolls over, these amounts come from fund reserve.
Then we ask for fund, we have to request permission to utilize the fund reserve. So that would go back to fund reserve and then we request board support in utilizing that fund reserve. And then the third item we are considering for fund reserve is to support our A V system. Our Crest Ron A V system that allows us to be able to stream meetings and have virtual meetings is at the end of its years of useful life, seven years. We anticipate the cost of renewing that system, replacing that system to be about 40,000. And that would be a necessary one-time expense to continue our streaming meetings, continue that capability for partner meetings that occur virtually would be speaking of a fund reserve utilization to support that.
Just basically the audio and the transmission.
I believe it would be basically the audio and the transmission component. I do not think we would be replacing those, but I would have to get our A V specialists for specificity around everything that's included in that. Very good with that. And then I would just like to check in. I know we can schedule until one, we are past one. Moving forward, we do have like what we are looking at preliminarily by division. Would the board like to continue to have the ability to?
Yes, something very serious. And I know that's why we discussed cutting, yes, because I know that.
So one of the things we could do, we could send this information with some brief narrative to describe that. And then if there are additional questions, we'd be happy to take those questions from the board members in follow-up to that if that.
Can I ask a question? Do the parentheses designate a shortfall or an overage? Because on the presentation this morning, we had some numbers that were in red. I think those were maybe actually overages, but then the parentheses were shortfalls. And in my mind, it was. I just want to know how your.
So it's a variance in the budget and generally it would be a negative variance, but if it's how we presented this morning for revenue was in red to show that it was a shortfall and for expenditures to show that it was the budgeted amount. So kind of two different. But in general, it's a negative.
Agency support. What does that mean? So on these where you see at the bottom line, the number in parentheses, that is the amount of flexible agency dollars that are budgeted to make that division or that effort whole. So we've talked about infrastructure, we our L P H A funding, our county support. Those dollars are held at an administrative level. So when you see this variance, for example, on environmental health, we have 919,000 as a variance. That is because we are budgeting that that is the amount of flexible agency dollars that make this budget whole. And what you are seeing here is our preliminary balanced budget that we anticipate bringing forward in October. But this gives you an insight into what we're thinking for each division. And then we'll send this with a bit more narrative to accompany that. So that is simply the amount of support that's needed outside of the revenue that that division could bring in. Yes. So if they have grants, if they have these, that is the.
It was restricted. Basically, you're unrestricted.
Yes. Yes.
So that includes the infrastructure grant or any general grants, state funding.
Yes, that are not program specific. If they are program specific, they are included in the revenues for each division. If they are unrestricted, they are held at the administration level and then we budget to spend that here. Other business, any other comments? Just say thank you for your time. I know this was a substantial amount of time.
Oh, thank you.